Wednesday, June 4. And I call this meeting of the Planning and Voting Committee to order. We have a core of myself, Philip Vipon, Teddy Harley, and Jim Longhorn. Also in attendance, City Manager Henrietta Turner and the other Cindy. As always, we will start with the US Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any citizen comment? No. Item B is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the text of chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances to add a district to be titled Planned Development District and associated permitted uses and regulations. This is the, I think you've all got, you should have all got it by email. And then the revised one. Did you want to get Chris on the phone?
Yes. But he called because he's expecting us.
He is.
Yes.
Are we going to have Chris for the public hearing? Yeah. Yeah, this is a public hearing.
What we're trying to do is that in case the public was here, as we did with the land use plan, Chris gave a overview and said we have minutes to explain the purpose. And then that's the purpose of him calling to me to explain the purpose. If there are any questions, we can ask those questions. And Steph could do that. So that's the purpose of our, he could make his unit. We wanted to see if he had any comments.
Well, we have no public here for the public hearings. I'm going to close that section and then we'll get on to the actual. Item C would be to approve the minutes from May 7.
I move that we approve the minutes from May 7, 2014.
Motion by Teddy. I'll second it. Seconded by Jim. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries three zero.
I think it's kind of this.
Hmm? Okay. Item D, new business. Consideration and action to approve a variance for the size of the manufactured home at the property of 902 First Street. A variance of 40 feet is necessary under the Code of Ordinances, chapter 153 dot 03 dot 0, section 8. And basically that code says that every model home should be a minimum of 1,000 square feet.
And the application that she submitted to us came out to 960 feet. It is a 2014. She has met all the requirements other than size. She's got the signatures from all the property owners with the 250 feet. She did submit the site plan, which does meet the requirements of the setbacks. And, uh, I don't know if there's anything else.
And this is for her living?
Yes. This is her property and she is purchasing this kind of question. However, remember.
However, remember.
And, um, my comment on that is, let's see, that it shows to be any nuisance within the other, the area there or any kind of any of that.
Are considerations for precedent setting for future prospectors? I don't want to force prefer for variance. For a lot of much preference.
That would be good. Let me take that, I mean, obviously.
Size matters.
Yes.
No, you're absolutely right. I'm going to make sure that we don't set a precedent.
I agree.
Maybe this, uh, the ordinance maybe needs to be looked at to be, because there's an awful lot of model homes that are 60 by 60.
Well, look, I think why they used the 1,000 square feet was because I think at one time they thought, they wanted to make sure that it wasn't an RV track, RV camper.
Well, so they used to make manufactured homes at the 60 by 75. And trying to get the prices down to 22,000 and 19,000, they've made them a little shorter now. So we as a committee probably need to update this ordinance and make it a little more flexible. Must be a nice one.
Yeah.
It's too big one.
Are you long side line?
She does. Yeah. Yeah, I have a long pad. I look at a long pad. And she knows the number of that property. The property, it's actually two lots is what she has. And the total frontage is 100 feet and the depth is like 300 and probably 70 something feet. She's got 400 rooms.
It's just got kind of place.
It's got a face first.
First street.
Because if you look at your Google Earth, see, and her site plan, she has a words facing the front. Actually, that's a good question.
Now, the bench is almost on. That's vast. Six on.
Because she has a driveway.
And a circuit.
And then she has her property address that first.
Oh, that's.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. There was a.
Doesn't have the size first.
Well, if she, it does, with mobile homes, no. It can go this way as long as they need the setbacks.
Two plenty of setbacks.
Yeah, plenty of setbacks. And there was a manufactured, well, actually, there was a mobile home that's a difference. Mobile homes are like 75 and older, anything over 75 is considered manufactured. My wife, other than they're built.
They changed the regulations of how they're built.
Improving.
No one doing wrong on that. I move that we approve the variance of 40 square feet for the manufactured home to be located at 902 First Street.
Motion by Teddy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Final item. Already. Yes, done that nine minutes, guys, just to get your record. Consideration and action to recommend an amendment to the text of chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances to add a district to be titled Planned Development District and associated permitted uses and regulations. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read this.
No.
Wanted to get Chris on the phone. I've read through it. I was going to, you did?
I read it and my question, I mean, I understood what it said, but I was trying to conceptualize what this would look like in reality.
Right.
Yeah.
That's kind of why I want to call Chris, because he's got a picture in his mind that I can't see right now.
This is Chris.
Hi, Chris, this is Cindy.
Hi, Cindy, how are you?
I'm good. We got you on speakerphone with the Fighting and Voting Committee.
I can't say anything bad about you, like?
Sure.
You'd better not, Chris. We know where you live.
All right, all right.
And I also have Ms. Henrietta Turner here also.
Okay. Very good.
Chris, we've had a chance, because Cindy emailed this out early to look at it. And myself and I think Jim as well, probably Teddy as well, we understand everything you're writing here. We're just not sure where it fits in and how it goes, where the jigsaw piece goes in the puzzle.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, just, uh, I guess administratively, it fits into your Code of Ordinances in the zoning ordinance under chapter 153, which is your zoning regulations. Then I, I imagine it going into section 036, which is, um, at the very end of where you described all the different zoning districts.
Okay. So like how we have the R1, R2. Yeah, and it'd be like the last one there?
Right, that's, I, I find it, dot 036, it's on the very top of the first page.
Okay.
And I thought that it could fit there.
Now, Chris, if you could explain the reason why we need to do this.
Okay. Why would you like to fit it there or why we want to even consider having Planned Development District regulations?
Chris, this is Jim. I think for me, I would like to know why we want this regulation. And secondly, I'm having difficulty visualizing what this would look like in reality. So if you had some examples that you could pass to me, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay. Okay, so, typically with, with our, our zoning districts, we, particularly our, our single family districts, we set forth, okay, every law is going to have, it's going to be a minimum of 6,000 square feet. Going to have 25-foot front yard setbacks, uh, seven and a half foot side yard setbacks, 50-foot rear yard setbacks. Height is going to be limited to, um, you know, 35 feet. And every time somebody needs to change something within a development, they need to come back to the city council and request a rezone. So if they wanted to do a, you know, a town home portion, if they saw that the market was demanding that, it's more of either town homes or garden homes or two-bedroom apartments, whatever the case may be, they would need to come back to the council and ask for that particular area to be rezoned. And what the Planned Development District does as an alternative to that is says, okay, give us a, a general plan, a concept plan of the future development. And these set of rules that you're going to adhere to that may be different from the rules that we set forth for our standard single-family residential district or for our town home district or for our local commercial, local business district. Maybe slightly different if you, it's, you know, only 10-foot setbacks at the front because you're trying to achieve a tighter street scheme or something like that.
Chris, have you looked at?
That would then be possible within the Planned Development District. So it's not the, the ordinance that's dictating what happens and making sure that it's consistent. It's not as you are saying that it has to be these dimensions. It's what the developer sees as the market is requiring these dimensions to be. And it gives him the flexibility to, to make changes within that as he needs to, as he goes, as he goes through his, as he gets his development converted over time. That's the basic idea. Built, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's based on, on this kind of major assumption though, that whatever you're doing needs to be distinctly better than what, what we're currently producing. You've got to end up with a product that is, uh, is much better for the community at the end of the day, has more of the things that we need, the things that we want, um, in order to have this kind of flexibility. The other thing to think about with this is that we're, we're changing, we would be changing this in the zoning ordinance and making this avenue, this vehicle available for any developer to come in. And with any piece of property and say, and do his own, kind of do his own thing. So I know that we've been, we've been talking about, uh, the Riverbend development and that that might, that development was proposed, would be this kind of much of a, but we're going to put that aside for, for a moment because what we're concerned about is the greater good of Floristville, the matter of who the developer is, as long as the project would meet the minimum criteria that this district applied to, they need to use these same tools too, and we have to be fine with that. And so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear about that as well. That would be my only other major point. Does that, does that start to address the question?
Kind of. The only thing I'm a little concerned about is, because I was going to ask you specifically about Riverbend, and I'm not quite sure what you mean by putting it to the side.
Well, what I mean is, we're not really, when we're talking about this amendment to the zoning ordinance, because we have to treat everybody fairly and every situation fairly, even only have a specific case that's about to come before us. We, we have to put that aside in our minds and think broadly that, um, is this a good thing for the city of Floristville or all of our corporate limits? And not just, is this a good thing for the Riverbend development? It may be a good thing for the Riverbend development. It may not be a good thing for, for other larger, you know, large tracts out there. It may want to develop other masterclass by concept. I happen to think, my professional opinion, that it is a good tool to have. It does give you, does give the developers flexibility and does give us the potential to have something better than just, um, just the standard 60 by 130 foot lots.
I agree.
So that's why I'm, I'm putting it, I'm going to decide in your mind. And your task is to think, okay, how could, if we applied to these same rules and apply them to another, you know, maybe there's 150-acre tract, um, on the north side. Or maybe there is a 75-acre tract on the south side or on the east side or wherever it is. It's not Riverbend. Is, is there potential there for this to, uh, to do well and give some flexibility and give us some of the things that we, we need to see in, in our neighborhoods that wouldn't be available under just a straight, you know, single-family zoning or a straight duplex zoning or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, it does bring more structure to it, I agree.
Yeah. And, and the way that this works is they, um, they have to, they have to prove out their concept.
Right.
They prove out the base, basic idea. And then as long as they sit, as long as they stay within a set density, and they provide, um, that they address things like parking and landscape, um, access, they address utilities, um, as long as those things are addressed, then, um, we don't worry about whether it's a, you know, as long as we said, it's, you know, we're, we're happy to accept 15-foot minimum setbacks. If it's 15-foot 1 feet versus 25 feet, we're not worried about that. We don't have to then come back to the Board of Judges or come back to you guys for interpretation about it. We see a concept plan upfront, um, we give them some latitude to change it from time to time if they need to. And it generally helps out going a lot faster in the development process.
So if we take an example, if originally he's got a 10-acre site and he was going to put four houses an acre on it, providing he puts everything in, um, in accordance with this new ordinance, if he suddenly changes to six an acre, we don't really care. Is that right?
Well, as long as he declares at the beginning, hey, I'm not going to go, uh, the net density that I'm going to achieve is.
Right.
Is, is not, doesn't exceed some familiar unit per acre.
And Chris, Jim here, how about, uh, under this plan, the developer's ability to put in narrower streets, for example, to get more lots into a particular place? I see a lot, I've seen a lot of that in work titles, for example, in some new neighborhoods where the streets are some area can't always get down with if anybody's parked on the side.
Is, is, uh, you're concerned about the width of the streets?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's something that we, that's something that's negotiated. If they are looking for a, um, if they're looking for a narrower concept than what our current standards are, then they need to present that. But we still have the right to say, um, you know, hey, that doesn't work for us or, um, you know, and we prefer that we didn't do that. Or we do that, if our code of all that offices, you know, hey, our streets have to be, um, this wide. And unless you have some other plan in mind where our, our apartment can reach all points of the subdivision without any, any other entrances, then, um, that's going to be a concern. And we'll, if, if we don't have to recommend approval of that. You guys, as the Fighting and Voting Commission, are going to be recommending to the city council on the application that comes forward. So if you guys see that the streets are too narrow or that the sidewalks that are proposed are going to be too narrow or all on the wrong side of the street, whatever the case may be, then you guys can, uh, recommend to the city council that they approve it subject to changing those things. That's, that's within your, within your power.
Okay, I wanted to question, does this give the developer the ability to intermix land use, for example, to put business and commercial pieces in the middle of a residential?
Yes, yes, we would, uh, what you would do is set up an underlying district in the area that he wants, um, commercial to go. And we give him some flexibility in that area and then the rest would be a residential district and we give him some flexibility in those areas.
But he still has to come from, in front of P and Z with that plan.
Yes, he does. He still has to come forward with an application. That says, this is what I want to do. And you guys still have, well, you guys have the obligation to review it and say, we, we think this is okay, some changes, we think it's okay as proposed, or we don't think it's okay, we don't think it's a good thing for Floristville. That's the thing we have to remember about zoning is zoning is discretionary. It's not a given. Every plant has a zoning which entails its some uses by right. But when somebody seeks a change in that zoning, and it's no longer by right, they're asking for something different, something, um, something better for them. And we have to weigh, first of all, is it consistent with our future land use plan? And that's kind of what we were envisioning in that area. And finally, is that it could be a good thing for, for the city? We'll look at consistency with the plan, um, we'll look at, um, the compatibility of the surrounding land uses, and then we look at access to another, another major concern. Whether or not to grant a zoning that, that something's requested. But just remember that it's discretionary, uh, anybody who comes in, all we're doing here is setting up the rules, the basic, the rules of play, okay? To play in this game, you have to follow these rules. And once faced with that, they're playing the game and we can say, yes, no, or conditional against.
Yep, it does.
It does, thanks.
Question on the time limit. Is two years too long?
I don't, I don't think 10 years is too long. I think, well, I, I would have said 2 years is too long pretty 2008, when credit was so free and a little bit less, when we knew it. But in today's economy, I think sometimes it just takes longer for these kind of deals to get done. And, um.
I guess why I'm asking that is.
10 years is, is probably fair enough.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking that is because Floristville is growing like a weed and I don't want areas held up.
Right.
You know, for two years, just because they got two years.
Well, and there's no reason that, let's say that, let's say that they, they did the PPG for clients and for some reason it stalled down and they sell it to another developer. Uh, well, that developer could come back in and amend the PPG. And, you know, present this concept of how you're going to make it happen.
Okay.
But there's still, it's still possible to amend it. But they would then, they would then have to come back to, you do have to come back to the council.
Okay, I just want to clarify the very last item on there, the plan changes. If they do substantially deviate from their plan, then it's a violation of the rezoning of.
And then we go and put it in then, and then they, and then they have to go back and amend it.
Yeah, I'm just.
High process to it.
I just want to clarify, they come back in front of P and Z?
Yes.
He doesn't say that. It implies it. I understand.
What it does is.
I understand the city manager and his, can interpret what constitutes a substantial deviation. But I want to make sure that it comes back to P and Z. Because that's where they're controlling.
We can usually add labels there that clarify stuff.
And this is exactly what we've dubbed out in my, with Riverbend. Gives them a certain amount of flexibility, which we don't want to be having special meetings every week to change a lot.
Yeah.
So particularly when you start getting subdivisions in, you've got Riverbend 700R, you've got Mark rituals, which is going to be 260. You've got that Alway Out of 97, it's going to be 400. You know, we'll be here every night if we have to babysit it and nanny it like that. So I like this. I did read it over yesterday and I read it again today. And I actually was going to highlight areas that I wasn't happy with. Although there's no highlights on here. Just wanted some clarification on those last two items. Anybody got any more questions for Chris? All right?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Chris. Go have a drink or some dinner. What chip was yours?
Well, if you're buying, I'll have a drink.
Okay, you got it. All right. Talk to you soon.
Well, I want, um, I guess Henrietta and Cindy, I will see you all tomorrow afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll see you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, this is something that's never been done before here.
I know. How do you feel about it?
It's kind of, it's kind of interesting.
Do you remember when we did the growth plan? And when we had the thing up on the wall and the different colors of what was going to go? This is just an extension of that. And it dovetails into our growth plan beautifully. But without us being a nanny. But without us being a nanny to every damn, you know, new construction site that's going up. And we have to give people a kind of broader spectrum of what they need to be able to do, otherwise we'll never grow.
Does this not put more weight on Cindy's office to be sure they follow that?
I think it puts more weight on us so that when, so that when, when Riverbend comes before us, we need to look at it very closely and weigh it with this and make sure. I, I think it puts more weight on us at the meetings to get it right. Because once we've got it right, then it should be pretty easy for you guys to do it.
But it also gives you guidelines to begin to say, as they're professionals, they get the requirements that you do.
Right, yeah.
And then the developer group that helps them develop is gonna even outline them even further. So the engineer has it, their consultant, Chris has it, and then it's a mental checklist for them going forward. So these are, these are gonna give them trudgers, we're gonna get more in detail, hopefully as the agreement goes forward. So this is like one of the building blocks. Some of the things we have attached, of course, also going along with this is a first agreement, a consulting, we've already proved that.
Yeah.
It's going forward with the council. Because, like I said, he authored the land use plan, and we want to make sure that this, all entitled, as we can reduce the ordinance. This is one of, this is not one of what I had put on the front, but we had to bring it up to the front, to the fairground and annexation, and those kind of things are coming forward. Chris is gonna be helping us, we take the lead on that, personally. To me, I think Cindy feels comfortable.
Yeah, I know you all feel comfortable. I really do like her. So hopefully we can go ahead and go forward and get these things going.
Well, in any relationship, I don't care if it's a marriage or if you're building five thousand homes, you gotta have a set of rules to live by.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and this, I think, does that.
Henrietta, are you still here, Chris, for this?
Yes, I am really good for this, and this will help us with Riverbend, development agreement that we talked about previously. It also will help us set the foundation for our subdivision ordinances and things such as that. So this is definitely something we need to throw in.
Who's case up?
We, I'd like to, before you quote a proposal, I'd like to clarify that on page five, section R, plan changes, that it's reworded to clarify that on any violation, it comes back to P and Z.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that I wasn't, that seemed to me a little bit gray and a little bit hazy. But other than that, I'm fine with it. I think this is great for Florisville, and it's what we've been working on as a committee for six, seven months.
It says shall be re, be submitted for review following the second procedure required, in the original.
It did, that just seemed a little gray and hazy, so.
Yeah, if you said you would add language to clarify it.
Yes. I just said we're gonna make the proposal, part to part, so we need to add that in the proposal. Okay, so that's my only, um, and I've read it, this is my third time reading it now, so. And I get more excited as I'm reading it, actually. It really is. It's very clever, you know, Chris is sometimes a real quiet-spoken guy, and, you know, that, he's, he's pretty sharp.
He is.
Yeah. A lot of respect for him. I might just buy him that drink after all.
We'll be here a while.
Yeah.
Yes, he will. Okay, can I get a proposal then, reworded such?
I'm moving, breaking news in the text of chapter one fifty-three, the code of ordinance is to add a district to be titled Planned Development District and associated permitted uses and regulations with stipulation that page five, paragraph R, is my plan to state that any changes come back upon the motion.
Excellent.
I think I second.
Proposal.
I'll second.
By Jim, and a second by Teddy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And then when he does that, then, if he could email them out.
We'll do it. We'll do it.
Well, that does it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
You want me to adjourn?
A second by Jim, and carries three zero. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good job on this, Henrietta.
Cindy, as we're figuring out-
I'm Cindy, sorry.
Because of, because of that incident as well.
What's team effort?
We're meeting tomorrow to meet with the T V D, so Chris is gonna be here to prepare for Riverbend as well as the design. So this is starting the planning area, so with T V D review.
On our chamber luncheon on the third Wednesday of this month, Richard Coons is coming to speak and to try and give the public more information about Riverbend. Because, you know, I've talked about it, and everybody's going, oh, look, it's not thinking lots, and, you know. It's typical naysayers, and so, um-